I'd like to call to order the Douglasoni Board of Appeals meeting. For Wednesday, September seventh at seven oh three P M. The first agenda item is a public hearing continued from August third, twenty twenty two. Dermot Collins, case number two zero two two dash zero six twelve Cottage Colony.
Is the applicant bring up a chair? Yeah, you know what? Mike, I'll go over this.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks.
Hey, no problem. That's the least I can do for it. Mike, you can take the thing right. My camera seats just sound right.
Yeah, for the representative to join us?
Good evening, Sryne Avery Attorney for Mr. Collins. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Great, and I see. Mr. Collins and his wife Diana are there with you in person.
Yes.
Mister Chairman, would you, would you like me to proceed or?
Well, I, yes, one of the reasons that I continue it was so that members could go out and look at the site, which I believe most everybody did. So, yeah, go ahead. You have the floor.
All right, thank you. So first, I, um, my understanding is that. Mister Collins has a number of letters in support of the variance from. His immediate neighbors and abutters on Crown Colony, Cottage Colony, excuse me. Um, I just want to make sure. Um, Dermot, if you have those and if you want to distribute them.
Yeah, that's the latest one.
Um, and Dermot, if, if could you, if you will, could you just identify the, the names and if you know the addresses of those people?
And the first person to go up and go down was Adam Finn. So he was on a person at the last meeting. He owns the plot along to the right of the shed. And Eminem McKenzie was here at the last meeting, voted them or divorce on each side. They got no problem with the. Uh, the shed being there and the letter just got now was from the cocktail boy. He was an immediate neighbor. And he's not problem with it. It's rather the core.
Okay.
And then our next door neighbor on the left is trying to see what they, we've got a letter here, he's already know.
Okay, have so have you identified all the individuals who have written letters of support?
And two, two of the individuals were, were here to person.
Okay.
Online, uh, we've got that from our next door neighbor. Uh, or sorry, both next door neighbors, one of the neighbors is here.
Okay, I understand. All right, I, I just wanted to take a few minutes this long to summarize a, a few issues that we discussed. Um, last time, and then if the board has any additional questions or items that they like to discuss pertaining the application, um, more than happy to. Answer any questions you may have, so. The last meeting, the issue came up of. Why the shed as laid out on the plot plan submitted by Mister Collins isn't centered. On the parcel, um, or more centered. As a formerly proposed garage was, and so I just want to be clear that the answer to that question is. Because, uh, really moving it any farther substantially back. From where it is now will require, um, both a retaining wall. And likely a structural engineer, um, to design that retaining wall. And, uh, my, my client, I think reasonably believes that the. Cost and burden of those measures. Create, create a substantial hard, create the substantial hardship that is. You know, essentially outlined in, in our, our application. Um, and, and that that hardship outweighs any necess- necessity or benefit to. The neighborhood. Mister Collins also would note that. Uh, the construction of a retaining wall on the parcel would itself create. A potential hazard for children and animals in the neighborhood in terms of. You know, fa- you know, falling in, into and around, um. The, the area between the retaining wall and, uh, the, the shed. So, and I would know that Mister Collins in between since the last meeting. Went out to the site and he measured. Approximately ten feet back from where the shed is currently. And it's about a nine foot. Nine foot depth, if we, if the shed were to be moved just ten feet back from its current location into the parcel. Another, another issue that came up was. I believe. One member of the board. There was definitely concern expressed about the two and a half feet, and I believe one member of the board. Said something to the effect that the board wasn't inclined to grant variances for more than half of the. Required setbacks, so. In other words, if the setbacks twenty feet sounded like the board isn't inclined to grant setbacks of more than. Um, or excuse me, variances of more than ten feet, well. If that's true respectfully, that's, that's an unlawful position to take. Um, to, to apply generally to applicants. Um, the ability to seek a variance is a matter of state law under chapter forty eight. Um, it's based on requirements of that statute as laid out. Within the. Town zone, uh, variance application that we've submitted. Um, each. Case, each application for a variance needs to be evaluated on a, on its own basis. Um, and here we have, as Mister Collins stated, several neighbors, including both of the immediate abutters. Who have expressed support or who are here to express support. Um, and, and no one, no one to my knowledge has, has voiced any or articulated any opposition. At least not any specific opposition. I believe there was a member of the public and a butter at the last meeting who simply stated. That she wants to make sure that. The process is done legally. And, and I think we're all in agreement as to that. That's why we're here. Um, to go through the proper legal channels to seek the variance. Um, so. The point is that the board shouldn't be concerned here about setting precedent, right? If you grant the variance, it doesn't mean you need to grant. A similar variance that comes your way. Uh, that would need to be evaluated on its own merits. There could certainly be cases where a two and a half foot. Variance or, or an eighteen seventeen and a half foot variance would be egregious under the circumstances. I simply just don't think that's the case here. The final, the final issue that came up was the discrepancy. On Mister Collins's application. Uh, regarding the amount of relief requested. The discrepancy between his application and the, and the certified pot plant that was submitted afterwards. Um, my understanding based on my research since our last meeting is that. Uh, the. Notice sent out by the town. Contained all the necessary information. Uh, required by statute concerning. That hearing and, and tonight's hearing. The amount of relief requested is not something that is required by statute, not something in my experience that's typically listed. Um, for the very reason we have in this case, which is that it's something that often changes. As part of the hearing, it's fluid. Um, it can change from one hearing to a continued hearing. Based on discussions with the town and certain give and take and conditions that. Boards, um, maybe thinking of imposing. So I, I don't believe that. Mister Collins's application is. Invalid as a matter of law because of that discrepancy. My suggestion is to take a pragmatic approach at this and. And the only question I would have is, has any member of the public come into the building apartment to review the file? And. Foregone the opportunity to be at the last meeting or tonight's hearing. Based on the notion, um. That the relief being requested and possibly granted is that listed in the application as opposed to the certified pot plant. I, I imagine the town would have a log of anyone who availed themselves of that opportunity, and if no one has, I. Again, I, I don't think as a matter of law, the application is defective, but even as a matter of. You, you know, basic fairness and, um. You know, practical approach this, I don't think there's, there would be any harm to the public if not. Um, and, and if there was, if there was someone who did. Go into the building apartment between the time of the application and our first hearing. I would simply suggest that. We could. Have a brief continuance of tonight's hearing and, and give them notice, the complete packet and all materials that have been submitted. Obviously give them notice of the next hearing and, and see if, um. They'd like to come in and, and voice any opinion. I think we have until October twenty first. Um, in terms of an action date on this application. So. Thank you for giving me the time. I just wanted to, again, summarize those few issues that came up at the last hearing. Um, I understand, I guess there's a couple individuals. Abutters, members of the public who would like to be heard and, um. At this point, I, I don't believe that there's been any valid reason to deny the variance expressed at. Um, the public hearings. Um, in terms of any facts that would undercut the statutory criteria and the reasons for. Why the variant should be approved as played out in our application, so. Thank you.
I just want to mention that, um, hearing tonight's meeting and. If there's a vote will be boarding on it is Mister Bobara, Mister Palmer, Mister Forget, Fitzpatrick and myself, Paul, who heard the, uh. The case at our last meeting. So is there any board members that you discussed this? I'm, I'll open it up to the floor after the board members.
Actually, I have a question for a town council. So. At the last meeting, um. This is the application that can be seen.
Yeah.
And. So it has six feet on the sideline, twelve feet on the rear. This is dated July thirteenth. Our last hearing was on August third. This certified plot plan was submitted August second. And it's. Different than what the application says. So where it was less than what was applied for, that was my concern. Can we consider it to be less? Given the fact that the application was in more than two weeks ahead of time, and it was like in twenty four hours before our hearing. When the certified plot plan was submitted.
So. It's an interesting question. I think that when we talk about notice of changes in applications, the, what we get concerned about is does the public. Have adequate notice of a change in an application because ostensibly. The public could be potentially concerned like, hey, I'm okay with ten feet, but when you tell me it's two feet, then I would have wanted to show up. Here, the notice to the public. Was, um, I'm assuming it tracked more or less. The notice of public hearing here that's at the, at the top. It doesn't mention. How much. Side yard.
Correct.
So I'm less concerned that they may have kind of figured out over time. I'm assuming that's what happened, then it was nothing nefarious that. They just like, oh geez, when we, it's actually closer than we thought. I'd be more concerned if this said in the notice what those feet were. Here. They've obviously changed what they're looking for. I think the board. And consider that in- increased because I think the notice to the public got noticed generally that people are looking. For a type of variance without specifically noting how much. So that would have been a bigger concern here. I think the spirit of it stays the same. That if they're looking for substantial waivers of, I think, two or three of the dimensions. So I, I think that I'm not super concerned.
The only concern that I had was, uh, they had a over two weeks to come in and review it. If, if somebody came in and I have no idea if they do a log down at the, uh. At the zoning office or not, I have no idea. So I don't know if anybody came in or.
Yeah, I, I think that, I think the applicant bears the risk of that though, too. So to the extent that someone comes out and says that there is insufficient notice of something. They have actually a longer period of time to appeal. So that, that's a risk that bears on the applicant. What I'm. From my perspective, the notice that went out to the public was okay. I think you have the authority. Every application. For anything significant that comes before you, people change things in it. So the question would be, is it reasonably within the ballpark? That people who had an interest in the subject matter could show up, like let's take for example. A housing development, this obviously isn't that where someone comes in, they have a site plan, it's ten houses arranged on a road. That is circular. And over the course of a couple of meetings and some discussion, it becomes. You know, uh, a completely different configuration, the roadway changes, the way it's oriented to the abutters change, all of that. We don't have issues with that. That's part of the process. It was the original notice sufficient reasonably to allow people. To figure out whether or not they wanted to take part of the process. Everyone takes some risk that things may change during the permitting process. Unless there was a reason to believe that someone was hiding something, I, I'm not super concerned about your consideration of.
Okay. Thank you, Jake.
Thanks.
So anybody else? There's anything you want to discuss?
Just the setbacks on the side, that's all. I mean, I took another ride up there, um, after we had spoken, after that meeting. And, uh, it does, does look like you can slide it over. And slide it back. Now the judgment comes in where you could slide it back to maybe six feet. But slide it over even, even, even a little six feet. Give you that much more even more parking, you know?
So. Go ahead. I, um, went up there also. And I took some measurements, and if you move that shed back about six feet, you would clear that manhole. And you could slide it across. You'd only have. Two, two and a half foot wall. Not a five foot wall. Because I measured it off of there, back that many feet at a level line and. The, the wall was no more than three feet. It was less than three feet high, which means you don't have to have somebody come in and engineer it. You could do a dry stack wall, correct, on top of a stone. Creston base. Correct. You could do a, a wall up to four feet in height, including the foundation without worry. And by moving it that far back, that actually gives you more parking, because now you're a whole area in front there to park. Because that would even be back behind where your pickup truck is parked in this picture. And that would move you over. You could even center it more, and that would eliminate a lot of the two foot on one side and. That wouldn't be, that would be an expense, but it wouldn't be that big of an expense.
Yeah, well, I, maybe I'm doing it wrong because I walked back. I measured out ten feet for the back of the shed. I found that where the hill goes up.
Yep.
And then I slid off. And then I tried it. There was straight lines. And I measured up, I was about standing about six feet.
Well, I ran a tape measure off the corner of the shed back. Six to eight feet at a level line, and it was no more than two or three feet up. To, to come to the grade that's already there now without having to go, so I didn't stand on it. I stood in front of it. Put the tape measure out and right there you could see it was only, it was less than three feet is when I came up.
I also looked at the site and I came up seeing the, the junior, I think, um, could easily remove. Six or eight feet to the left and also six or eight feet back.
Which would give them an extra parking spot or two also because now they're not shortened up in front of the shed. The, both manholes are uncovered. They have no problem with that. They back a little bit. Yes, there'll be two or three foot wall back there. But a lot of places have that, and that would be, that would just be more advantageous than what you're trying, we're trying to do here.
So anybody else wants to speak on this?
But didn't, didn't you have a plan to put a, build a two car garage there with a button on top of it too?
No, it wasn't apparent. It's never on the part.
Okay, well, I mean.
Those are two car garage.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we were never gonna get it. We weren't getting approval for it, so we just went through it.
No, because that was a separate, it's not even a separate law. It doesn't need qualifications.
Yeah.
So, yeah, you know. So I guess that's what we're asking if, if it's up to the devil boards, but up to me.
So due to, due to thing, I'm, I'm not sure exactly, but from the point of time to the. Point goes diagonally across. The, the back of the shed and then up the hill into the, um, into the D box.
Yep.
I don't think that's too far now. So I'm. Not sure if I could get, I'd have to check with the, um. The, uh, the guidance on the set the four season town as well to see how far enough, because I, I'm not sure what to do if, if I, if I cross that point. Yes, even, even gone my, left, left on, left on my.
I think the concern mainly has to be coming up to the side setback. At least six feet, so then pushing it back so the, you know, other growth that's in the other cars and stuff.
Yeah.
So that's what I would be looking for.
Yeah.
I'm gonna be honest.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Any other board members? Okay, will we open up to the public? Um, just have to state your name, the address prior to speaking, so the minute taker. Knows who's speaking.
Hi, my name is David Nikowski. Um, hi to the members of the board. My wife and I, we live next, uh, next door to, near that sixteen cottage colony. When my wife and I returned from Florida in mid-May, I, I said, uh-oh, and I saw the shed. I thought there could be a problem, but after four months of being here, it became clear that the shed was not a problem. Things I observed, the one, the shed did not obstruct the flow of water coming through the hill when it rained. Did not impede, impede on the quality of life of the neighbors. That is confirmed by letters written to the boards stating in no displeasure. Doesn't seem to pollute the air, doesn't make any noise. It's not an eyesore. It's not located. It is located next to a non-buildable lot. You could fit four cars on the lot. It's been done all along. I've observed that for four months. And it does not hinder access for fire trucks or ambulances. None of these neighbors who actually live in the colony object to the shed. Also important to consider is the shed does not block anyone's through the sunset. Opposing, President Biden said even the Second Amendment is not applicable. Why is it so different to give the variance for it dead than on?
Thank you, sir. Anybody else would like to speak? So would you like to move forward with your original request? Would you modify that? After hearing the different members?
Mister Chairman, if, if I may just ask a question.
Sure.
Uh. And it's really just, I, I think I missed something that a member of the board said. So the gentleman to the left of you was, I believe, mentioned he was looking for. Approximately. I don't know if he said to be moved over or six feet or just six feet from the side setback, but I, I'm not sure if he said why or. Or what, I believe he mentioned parking. So I just didn't hear what he said with respect to that.
So I guess the, you're talking about me, right?
Yes, sir, thank you.
So. Right now, the, the side set is got, you're, you're at two point three feet. So I'm saying total sixty. Push it to the center. They go six feet back.
And that, did that have something to do with parking or, or no?
No, I said it was given more parking if we had to. Or we had something to get out of the shed, you know, it was a car park, very possible could.
Uh, Dermot, would you like to, do you want to talk privately for a minute, or do you want to make a decision as to? What you like to do?
So if I move the shed over six feet, I'm back six feet, that, that'll be enough. I can't speak for the rest of the board.
That's what one board member said.
That's what I would be satisfied with.
Okay.
You know, and if you want to ask the rest of the board members how they feel about it, you may.
Well, does anyone else have objections about that?
I do.
Okay.
I'd like to see it further away from the lot line than. Than six, six, eight, you tell, total six.
Total six, yeah. Moving a six would be six away from the lot.
Be six away.
Can I ask you either, what is the difference?
What is the difference? Because.
Yes.
There's townspeople watching this meeting and other meetings, and if you go to two foot variance, somebody else will be coming and saying you gave the college is two feet, and we want one foot.
But isn't the committee? It's a hardship that we come to you.
It's not a hardship.
It is. We don't have.
What is your hardship?
The hardship is we have, there is no attic, there is no cellar, there's no.
Did you know that when you bought the home?
And that. That there was not, yes, we did.
Okay.
Okay.
And how long have you lived there?
Three, two years, three years, but just give me a second.
Sure.
Cause I'm just trying to explain the hardship. You comment, you ask for an exception of, of variance as you want it. Um, so I, we're asking you, that's the only place we can put it. Before we put it there, we asked the person that put the sewer system in, you know, where is the place that we can put it? And this is where he said, we asked the neighbors to make sure that it was okay with them. It doesn't block anything. It's not in anyone's way. Um, the road, emergency vehicles can go back and forth, and I know that you're saying about the variance. It's something that you've never granted, but isn't that what you do? You make exceptions or you listen to people and you say, okay. This is a hardship case. Yeah, we can make a variance in this case. Maybe the other cases that came before you didn't have such a small lot. I mean, the lot is very small. So it's not really a, it seems like we can't say, okay, um, because our lot is only this big, we only have this much space to kind of play with. And that's why we come and ask you, you know, this is what we have. Please kind of help us show what we can do. And I know you're saying it's not a hardship, but like we can't even put suitcases anywhere. You can't even put a Christmas tree. We don't, you know, it's just. It's a shed. It's movable. Um, it, and I, I don't understand.
Well, if, if in a line, one more thing you'd, we'd like to know about.
Sure.
It being two feet up, two point three inches off the property line.
Yeah.
If you were to put a ladder up against that, you'd be standing on your neighbor's property.
The, we got a.
So I.
From the neighbors.
I'm sorry?
And the, the neighbors gave us approval.
I know that, but are they gonna own it forever?
But you don't really make a decision on what's in the future.
You have to actually do it, actually.
You do, you have to.
Because.
If that case came up in the future.
What if they, what if the society, someone bought the place and they decided to put up a, uh.
Well, the shed is temporary, so.
What if they decide to put up a fence? So that's what I'm saying. Uh, in, in the very beginning, you should have asked us for a permit. That's the first, okay? Now it comes down, now it comes down to this, and what we're asking, maybe I would agree with the chairman, maybe eight foot is good. But when you put, when you put a ladder against something like that, we've had a, a builder wanted to build a house, but he wanted to be three feet off the popular. But then when he would put a ladder against it, he's in his neighbor's yard. It's just stuff like that. You have to be careful with what the neighbors do. You're not going to be there forever, and your neighbor's not going to be there forever.
Right.
So, and I'll, all we're asking, I'm saying six feet, six feet back.
Right.
He's saying six.
Saying, well, I'm saying six feet.
He's not saying six.
Well, I'm saying six feet back. But I would, you have the ability actually to almost center it on that lot.
Yeah.
With, and the shed is how wide?
Ten feet.
Ten feet. So that gives you forty feet, because a lot's fifty feet wide, right? So if you centered it, that's going to give you twenty feet on each side opposed to the twenty five we're looking at.
Center and then six.
So, and six feet back, that will bring you behind the tank, that will put you in the center. Yes, you'd have to build a wall, but then you'd be, I'd feel much more comfortable doing that. That's.
Right, and that's what you suggested, so, so, so is anyone else agreeing with six feet back?
Six feet back in the middle, in the middle, in the middle of the lot, it's mine.
Okay, so. Couple things. One is agreeing with you, so just hear me out. Before you, yeah. Part of, part of the frustration with this is with, and you've only been lived there for three years. You've already been in front of the board. You knew what the rules were. You just stated that you asked your neighbors. You asked, um, your subject guy. But you never asked.
But you never asked that guy. If you had asked it, no, just hear me out from him, if you had asked him, he would have been there to help you with this. Now you're, you're faced with, you're trying to ask forgiveness for something that you have and try to make it work. Before you, Jim, that you say you're the center, if you look at the pictures that that the applicants have filed, you can't center it, because um, the second man hold back is your pump chamber, correct?
Yeah.
So off the pump chamber, it probably, it probably comes out a short distance and then it's gonna have a forty-five and it's gonna shoot up that hill through the D box, so he that doesn't require much coverage, two feet, you can actually cover that bike way because it's always long. So he's got that challenge, I agree that you could move it over, I don't, I don't necessarily agree that you could center it, it's gonna interfere with that bike.
Right.
But I I wanted to point out, you're just saying, I'll be thinking that. If you read the building, goes anything under two hundred square feet, you do not need a a permit for, however you need to, will buy by all. That's the, that's the rest of the paragraph that you did.
If I name Mister Chairman.
Sure, go ahead.
Again, there's no precedent being set here, each each case will be evaluated by this board according to the facts and circumstances before it. I I understand hypothetically, if someone was sitting here interested in putting a shed one foot away from their property line. If they were to misinterpret what happened here and what was said here. Um, and if the variance was approved, there could be someone who was encouraged by that and submitted their own application. You, we know you can't stop anyone from submitting an application for anything, but it does not mean that you are locked into approving every um, variance seeking two point three feet of re- feet of relief from here onward. There, there, there's certainly a legal, again, and I believe this was another issue that was um, touched upon at last hearing. If Mister Collins needed to go on a ladder or paint that side of the shed or perform some type of maintenance, there is a legal privilege to do that. If I need my septic system pumped and I need a truck to go partially over my neighbor's land to reach that septic system. That isn't, that is an act of privilege, um, if I, if I hire a contractor to build a fence on the property line, they obviously need to go to some extent onto the neighbor's property, that is a privileged action. So I I respectfully don't believe that that's a uh, appropriate reason to deny relief. Nor do I believe inappropriate reason to deny belief is um, some any type of you know, resentment or or misgivings over Mister Collins not originally uh, speaking to the building inspector. We're, just by the fact of being here, we understand that that was a mistake to have not spoken to the building inspector in advance, and obviously we're trying to rectify that here through, through the proper legal measures. That, that being said, I would be remiss if I didn't, again, remind the board of the um, numerous other sheds located within the setbacks in this neighborhood. And when I mentioned that at the last hearing, the response was, well, they're grandfathered in, right? They're six years or ten years old, we don't need to worry about them. Well, they're six or ten years old because no building inspector saw a fit to raise an issue over them. And my understanding here is the only reason why your building inspector saw a fit to raise an issue is because there was a complaint made by someone who lives nowhere near this property. And on the same day that complaint was made, the building inspector was down to write up Mister Collins. I only mention that because, again, that complainant was, I believe she was present at the last hearing, and she didn't articulate any reason why the variance should be denied, all she simply stated was she wants this to go through the proper legal channel, well, that's what we're here to do. Um, I believe, I believe if there was any issue, it was a concern about the shed being in the right of way, um, in the road. I think the plot plan shows that it's not, um, it is within that, the setback off the road. Um, and that's one of the two variances that Mister Collins is seeking. Um, and so, and finally, the, my final point is, I I think in fairness, um, we should avoid a moving target, he's been before this board for the garage. That clearly, uh, that was withdrawn, I think we, I think I wasn't there, obviously, but I think another member of the board already commented that that was not going to be approved, that went to a vote. It doesn't seem like the board is inclined to approve the variance, um, according to the plot plan submitted. I'm not sure what Mister Collins wants to do, I may have to speak to him briefly, but I would certainly not want to say that we're gonna withdraw the application so that he can move the shed six feet over and six feet back. And then come before this board only to be uh, rejected again, so. I I appreciate some members of the board expressing, um, you know, the firm measurements and relief that they'd like to see, um, to the extent that there are any board members who haven't weighed in on that, I would appreciate their thoughts. And again, I can, I can then maybe speak to Mister Collins about what he'd like to do.
You want to take five minutes to speak to your client?
Dermot, is it, would you like to do that?
Okay, be- before you go, can I ask you what law that you're referring to that gives you the right to go on somebody else's property with the ladder? Uh, septic truck or anything like that? Do you have that law?
Well, it's, I I, and you, perhaps town council would would disagree with me, but I, it's, I believe it's just common law, which is basically you know, uh.
You don't have any mass general law that you could refer to? I'm just curious.
No, I do, it, it, I don't believe it's statutory, it's it's common law, just like, uh, you you know, a tort, a negligence, the elements of a action for negligence, a personal injury action is a, is a matter of negligence, and there's certain elements of that, and that's a matter of common law that's been passed down for hundreds of years, uh, this is, this is a, a real property, a matter of real property, just like, uh, easements and adverse possession and and trespass, all of those, all of those notions are are matters of common law in Massachusetts, going back to the days of the Crown. And and it's, and it's a matter of certain privileges to real estate. I I believe, I I believe it, I believe it, I believe it's actually a type of easement, um. I I could be wrong about that, but I believe it's actually considered a type of easement.
Okay, thank you.
Was there, is there anyone else on the board that, um, has an issue about moving the shed over by six feet?
I would like to see it at least, I'd like to see it at least eight feet from the sideline, and at least another six feet back, I don't think that would cause you any major hardships.
Mike, he's, Ron's okay, just, we're just questioning.
Yeah, the, I would like to see some sort of compromise in there, and which makes logical sense, obviously, I don't want to say that he's gonna go over six feet because that pipe is there, you're gonna need some sort of separation.
I'm not showing on the plan, Mike, and as we know, a lot of things have been misrepresented.
That's fine, I'm looking at two manhole covers and I know what, I know what a pump chamber looks like.
Yeah.
And I can see the septic at the top of the hill, a lot of you would tell me that that pipe is running straight up over the hill. I would doubt very much that it's going off on a, on an angle or whatever. I'm just trying to be fair and logical with it, so, um, he would not, and need to look at a septic plant and whatever, but even even his application shows that it goes four feet over to the left from where it is currently. And that may be enough to give him enough room, you know, when he, when he came last time, the meeting, the reason why he didn't want to move it over, which wasn't brought up, John touched on it. Dermot had said the um, reason he didn't want to move it over there because it would hurt. It would reduce his pocket over there.
Right.
Um, and centering it would, the septic system was a problem, so those tanks.
Right.
So you couldn't center it, so you could put one on the left of the right. But since Mr. Palmer had explained with his measurement said, if you move it back six or eight feet, which required a two or three foot wall. It would actually allow him to be at a pocket front because it would be further back than what the picture was shown as pickup truck would. So, I'm going by what I, that I heard, I didn't, I didn't confirm any of the things that were said. I would think that there could be some sort of compromise with it. I'm not overly excited about two point three feet, I'm not, to be honest with you, uh, uh, from the property line. And I understand you have challenges, so. I guess you talk to your lawyer and with that, but I, I can feel a general consensus of 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 what people are saying here, I don't know where you're reading it to it.
You may want to take a moment to talk to your lawyer.
All right, while they're doing that, we have a uh, invoice here.
You can, you can go whatever you want to do. Yeah, no, I mean, you can sit there, you can go back, it doesn't matter.
Writing like that in the first grade. Looks like anyone of the other three. But can you redo it?
Yeah, and you get the blue sphere on your kid. You get that extra bonus, yeah.
Getting worse though, my kid's got a signed paper that said they gave them safety glasses my freshman signature, print, first name.
No one does curse, they're not teaching curse, so it's, it's a problem.
Pretty soon they won't even have a.
I know. This is gonna be a war this. Or maybe we connect right to the head, you just think. Yeah, just made a. Sure, that kind of find a way to get away, but still. I'm doing pretty good, how about you?
Good. Good to see you.
Yeah, let's have a good summer.
Uh, yeah, actually quite, quite long.
Yeah.
Yeah, quite long, how about yourself?
Yeah, good, warm, finally, kind of on semi-vacation this week, so today's my only work day of the week, so. Little oddities, yeah. I didn't, I didn't get away at all this summer.
No.
Just saying, it's just work, busy.
Well, the courts are all open now, so.
The courts are open, but I think towns are still, we have a backlog of stuff coming out of COVID and things they have to get done.
Yeah.
There's still transition mode, financial stuff, zoning stuff, development, it's back.
True.
You know, all these projects that were on the rocks are now back, um.
Good to see you.
What he says is, there are such things that apply.
You have a couple of them?
Like, or easements of necessity, you have no access.
There are certain. Yeah, that's why.
Yeah, no, that does exist. Sounds good, so I'd want to make this a battle between lawyer and horse something.
Oh, no, yeah.
Again, and easements by necessity are very rare.
We want to catch something new.
You put on two properties.
Well, I can't, that's sad, you know, when you get.
By the way, I get to.
My right.
Putting a ladder in your property here. Doesn't work like that, by the old ones. They weren't like making news by necessity.
And you got your first. Get your first tonight. Get your first. For the size of being efficient.
First time ever.
But being efficient.
Okay, be careful ways, right? Let me count the ways. duly obligated, I get a complaint to have back on.
Don't worry, we can complain about you too, you know.
Life starts never end, even in front of your face.
Doesn't do any good.
Yeah. My wife's not funny.
Well, I live in your, oh, no, I'm sorry, the office.
You're on November again.
We have another office.
Sixty. And I just have no. Yeah, they say it's great.
Yeah, it's not far. That big old white.
No, no, so, no.
Yeah.
Uh, no, down off from one fifteen, it'd be like the second, the second, third house on the way. Then Jerry Perry owned that land that made, but all that subdivision.
Sure.
You know, they said.
But I mean, that's a beautiful spot there.
It's a nice town.
Yeah.
Chubby's way, yeah, the sanctuary, then the.
Yeah. Pretty.
My, when I bought my house.
Okay, we're gonna get back to this case.
Yes, Mister Chairman, uh, Mister Collins would like the board to just proceed with a vote on the application as it stands. Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Collins would like the board to just proceed with a vote on the application as it stands.
I got a question. I don't know whether I address this to you or them, but would it be possible to put a couple of layers of cement block, I mean, yeah, cement block, raise that up so you could get back a little bit without building a wall, just placing a perimeter of cement blocks around.
Yeah, the only challenge you have is that it'd be elevated to get us on or whatever else that he has in the shed to get out. Now the front would be.
Yeah, but that's, that's up to him.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be possible.
That would be possible.
Yeah, probably need a crane to lift the shadow and see how we take it.
Well. Yeah, I think you could drag it up and get a couple layers of cement.
So they want to continue as it is. That's what their, his attorney just.
No, move forward, move forward. Yeah, because like if, if I go through all the excavating and stuff like that, and then I, I gotta come back and front of the bar.
No, so.
You can come to an agreement what it is tonight and be done with it. You don't go and do it and then come back to them.
Nope.
No, there's no reapplication. This is all part of the process.
They can condition the variance on moving it to a slightly better location.
Well, you mean. Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Ron.
You talking about moving it back?
Whatever the board decides, that could be a condition of approving the variance.
So, uh, so, Ron, I guess I'll ask him directly. Is if you were to move it six feet to the left and six feet back, would you be satisfied?
Yeah, the only, only thing I'm, I'm not sure of is I think the, the syrup pipe.
Yeah. About ten side that should.
Honestly. I'd be basically come down till, so I'm not sure how.
Okay.
So around that.
Measuring off your shed that, when I was there.
Yeah.
You're about four feet to the edge of it, so.
Yeah.
So you, you're already at two foot point three.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, that would give me the six feet. I agree with that. That's, that's not.
Pushing it back six feet.
Let's push it back six feet.
Oh, you don't mean of moving an additional six.
No, total six feet. So that was the first thing I saw and, and of course.
So then you're back to your original application.
Yeah.
No, that's what. Maybe that's what we should refer to, so.
Yeah.
If, if, if you would, would it be possible for you to move it according to your original application dimensions? Which is you're six feet off the property line on the right and you're twelve feet off the front line, which right now you're at seven, you're gonna be moving back five, which is a foot less than what they're proposing anyway, so.
The only thing is I'm not sure how, how deep that pipe is. Maybe, maybe I get away with it. I'm not sure.
Excuse me, how deep what is?
There, there's.
There's a sewer.
A sewer pipe.
Oh, oh.
That pumps up the hill. Yeah, so it goes from the tank, it goes diagonally across the back of the shed and then takes a ninety degree and then goes up there. So if I went back, it may, with, if I don't have, I'd run the risk of. I'm not sure.
I know, you don't want to do that.
No, that's, that's, that's pushing it back. That's the only.
Yeah. You want to investigate that before we?
No. Just.
So, just for clarity for you guys.
Yep.
If you're gonna be six feet from the side, all, all he's gonna do is move to the left, three point seven feet from what he, where it is right now. Now you're gonna move over less than four feet.
Yeah.
And you're gonna move back. So you're back twelve feet from the front line or you want to go six feet further than what it is right now? Sixty further than what it is now. Okay, so thirteen. So you would end up, you would end up at thirteen eight in six feet. So. This is gonna just get back to chair. Typically, if he goes, it's gonna go the way they have a copy of the septic system.
Right.
Typically not always cover all the pipe and being mentioned.
That's what they're suggesting.
I'm just trying to help. Depict all of that.
The manhole, the manhole, yeah, you're not gonna be on that because if you look at the picture, you're four or five feet from the manhole. Yeah, yeah.
I think that's gonna go straight.
Most of the tanks, the pipe goes out to center of the tank. Yeah. Right, most of them are out to center, meaning it was.
How wide, how wide's the tank, Mike?
Five by tens.
Five by ten, so they usually go two and a half feet straight out, so you're having advantage there. So getting back to this.
I, I think you would be safe, but I'm not gonna deal with that, but I think you're safe in what they're proposing. He's gonna move over three. I'm just trying to help him get his head around what you're asking for.
Right, so.
So he's gonna move to the left, three point seven feet. He's gonna move back six feet, so it'll end up thirteen point eight feet from the, from the rear set act. He's gonna end up six feet away from the right side side. So, or the left side if you look at it from the front.
So we go with that.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Mubara, second by Mr. Ford.
Yeah.
All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
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 I, John Mubara.
I, Palmer.
I, Ron Ford.
It's better, right?
I did hear. Okay, public hearing is now closed.
We're not done yet.
We're not done yet. We only closed the hearing until we get the final.
So. Anybody have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to them the. What was the original one? I, I haven't got it here. I brought everything.
Well, you, you're gonna be, you're gonna, so what you're gonna give them is a a is twenty-five from the side, so you're gonna give them a nineteen foot variance. And then put them six feet from the sideline and then you're gonna give them a eleven point two variance. Eleven point two? Yeah, eleven point two variance to, from the rear. So it's nineteen from the side, eleven point two from the rear. Undocketed number. Bunch of numbers, but it's the same as what I wrote.
Yeah.
I lost the document.
That, oh, six. Twenty twenty.
Yeah, twenty, twenty twenty-two.
Dash oh six.
Okay, so we have a motion to bring the variance both sideline variance of nineteen feet.
Nineteen feet.
And a rear setback varies of eleven point four.
Point, point two.
Two.
Point two.
Yeah.
So, so he'll end up thirteen point eight from the rear setback and you're gonna end up six feet from the sideline.
Okay.
And I, and I marked that on the plot plan that they submitted and gave it to them.
We add into that just to require a certified plot plan after it's installed.
Oh, yes, it has to be done too. Yeah, certified plot plan after.
Well, the commission would probably insist on that anyway, so.
Yeah.
Well. To satisfy his complaint.
Yeah.
So they, they would supply a
a plot plan.
Certified plot plan, showing that it's no closer than what we're granted.
Yes.
All right. So we have a motion.
Oh, second.
Seconded by Mr. Palmer. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Hey, the variance is granted. We will draft the decision and get it to the town clerk as soon as possible. And then your appeal period would start.
Okay. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very much. Have a good night.
The next order of businesses to discuss. Fourth round, they were invited tonight, but they notified the town that where the principals were not, were not available. But I think we should discuss some of our concerns and invite them back, I guess, but.
Yeah, one of my concerns is the applicant actually called my cell phone and a lot of the voicemail on my cell phone, which I forwarded to the chairman. I haven't shared that with any of the other board members, so I violated the meeting. But the possible that you could send notice to legal counsel for the applicant and not do that if anything, we're gonna be suggesting, and I could tell you the voicemail, so you know what the content is of it. Suggesting that we meet outside of, on the public meeting to talk about this and it's not something I was comfortable doing. I didn't respond to it. It's.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm perfectly happy to, to send that email. I'll make it out of it now. I can't ultimately prohibit him if it was an attorney calling you, but I can make.
No, but the suggestion that we're on the voicemail, I think were inappropriate and I don't, and I think that any business that's gonna be conducted should be done.
Sure.
In open fashion.
Yeah.
I don't know how to get my cell phone number. I have a business, so a lot of people call me. Fortunately, I didn't take it because I didn't have that number, so. I was in a meeting at the time.
So we've had, Ken's been monitoring things the best he can for that site and we had, two months ago, we had a young lady that came in and went and put a deposit down in January for the fourth of unit and as of that meeting, which I believe was July meeting, absolutely nothing had been done.
It was framed. It was sided.
It was framed, which put a positive.
There was no electrical, rough electrical plumbing since then. I've seen. He would have the updates, so it doesn't matter what I see, I guess. So update on the site. We're talking about unit sixty-three. Yeah, seventy-four was being trimmed. Unit sixty-three, I have not been able to see him because they get the blinds closed on it. I do not recall going up to that unit for any inspections as of yet. Unit fifty-five, I believe, you see the fifty-five and fifty-three. I've been to inspections all the way through insulation. They've also done unit one and three, they're trimming now on Knott away. Uh, units five and seven are framed. I believe they're in there starting to do mechanicals. Unit two and four on the other side is framed sided window roof. Uh, there is some electrical being done in there. Units six and eight are framed, not sided. Foundation is in backfilled on units. Ten and twelve. Excavation is in and inspected for excavation only on seven and nine.
Yeah.
The, um one or super superintendent had asked, said they were required to give him asthma plans for the underground storage and water piping or whatever. But as they finished each phase, he hasn't gotten any phase one, any of phase two in there into phase three.
There's also been modifications to the infrastructure that he requested, documents on that as well. There's been changes to how they configured their water to pipes.
So he, he has, if he stated to you, Ken, but he's he told myself and I think he repeated it to Mike a few days later that he doesn't intend to sign any more water. Swup.
Great. On the report that Leonard has done, it was brought up also on that, you know, the recommendation that these asphalt should be done for phase one, phase two. Phase three doesn't even have power in, under the ground. Uh, it's finishing units in there and foundation, but there's no power in the drop of that. Said it was a holdup by National Bridge.
So. Is there anything done on this list they have?
Uh, it would be only as he's checked these off. I haven't seen anything else that's been done. Uh, this gives us the list and then that he went back for the second inspection and had noted that the outlet had more wrapped installed on it. There's still that, you know, the continual problems that have been up there with the sedimentation at the end of the fire loop road is still the retention pond and rain gardens are slowly growing in. There's still one or two that's an issue up there. Uh, and the contractor has made note that as soon as he can establish everything, phase one, phase two, which also includes retention areas at back of those units, he can complete uh, the main, main retention ponds on the left side of phase one, phase two going up into the development. They've got, as you can see by the drawings, they've done some compacted soils. They said they're not protecting for the sidewalks in phase two. The compaction results came back. They were, they were adequate, but now you can see there's the infiltration of the silks and everything that's washed in from the rains. There's also some depressions and irregularities that have to be corrected before they can put their pavement down on it.
Yeah, I haven't been up there since the storm we just had.
I actually went up there during the storm and was pleasantly surprised as how well it was handling the water when it hit down for the second day.
Oh, no kidding.
And it's handling it very well. There's some issues on, on some of the spots, but it's light years ahead of where they were a year ago.
Yeah.
It's got some good. At the same time, I want to acknowledge some of their efforts have been paid off, but they still have some challenges. The foliage they planted in the rain gardens, the lawns themselves, even with this drought conditions we've had, have come a long ways. They look really well up there.
So we are getting some problems.
There's some things that have been persisting for little years. Their, their response to the Leinard engineering about some issues in May of seventeen, their response was to address at the top code. Which is no top code on any of that stuff right now. And then, um, some relatively simple things. Apparently there's fifty feet of guard rail that's damaged. And that was, uh, May thirtieth of nineteen. And their response was they'll replace that section upon the completion of phase four, which is the final base. I mean, piece of guard rail.
That's the three inch or.
Um, it says it's a station two fifty to station
That piece of guard rail is when you're entering into the site. Uh, probably the second section of guard rail. It's like a plow hitter or whatever. It had curled out. I made mention to him several times. I said, listen, that guard rail, you're gonna do something, so I'm just gonna get cut.
That's a safety.
Right.
Issue right there.
What they did is they went in and cut off the flare end, so now it's at least not sticking out.
But there's no guard rail with, and that's where it drops right off, right?
Uh, it's, it's, it's not a severe drop right there. That's the start of where as you come in, you go into the first area.
Right.
So that's not in that extreme severe area. That's the beginning of it. We also have that wrapped in between entrance and exit ways and those stones are continually out and I wrote. Uh, I made mention to that. They said they had given them authority to do that and that was proved. And that's how it was staying. And I said, well, I don't have any documentation that that was approved ever. I believe.
They did say that at the last meeting, like Ken said, and it was all Bill Kondif's idea.
Yeah.
But I called Bill Kondif ten minutes.
That doesn't sound like Bill.
Bill said absolutely not. I would never agree to make a change without consulting the board.
Yeah, that wasn't Bill's style.
No, it was not.
Bill was not of a mind to really cut corners on this project.
So, but I would have been myself in the last ten days and there was some, one of the rocks of six inches.
Six inch mine, cringe.
Yeah.
I come so close to hit those on my old panic range. I come so close to hit those on my old panic range. The continually saying, get those things off or get those roads cleaned up, don't you have anybody going through? They have, uh, landscaping, a couple up there doing landscaping, I said, you know, you, you need to maintain this. Said, well, we're not gonna change it out until we do.
So is it inconsistent though with their construction management? I mean, we require that they get a construction management plan approved. Like, like we always do.
Uh, it's, it's phasing as per and I can, what I can tell.
So the phasing is one thing, but construction management is a different.
Different story. So, yeah, one of the things that happened is when Bill departed. Then we, we lost the eyes there and then, um, to the displeasure of, of, of the board. Uh, I got out of frustration one night, I said. Ben is not gonna be our point person, and Dan said, you can't do that, I said, until tomorrow morning and they figure out who's gonna be, we need somebody to watch what's going on. And to Ken's credit, he's, he's done the best he's can with what he, uh, confessed he can, what he's got to work with. He had reeled him in a little bit, but we have some other concerns that are coming up, it's, we're at the fifty percent phase. What's the status of the homeowners association account, what, what's going on with that? At Tapley, they come into his console, um, stated that at the end of phase three, prior to phase four, they're gonna. Post a surety, what, how much of it is that? The value of that, is that enough to cover the top coat that's gonna go in?
Have to go back and look at the security provisions.
But there's, there's a lot of unanswered.
Right now, though, they're covered by a covenant, so if they're not complying with terms for installation of infrastructure. Permits can be denied, I mean, if there's technical stuff and.
Right.
You have to look at each thing and what are the requirements, but that, that goes to withholding a permit, that doesn't necessarily help us get. Um, low and moderate income households into units that they've been promised.
And we had someone here, the young lady that. Put a deposit in January and by June, absolutely nothing had been done. Other than the house was up, the building was up, roof sited, windows in, everything.
He lost his plumber, he said in the beginning, the structure has been framed, sided, windows. Since twenty nineteen.
The problem is now is the spike in the interest rates, these affordable people may not qualify. So, we're, we're kind of. And the law says that. What can we do with this? So, we're.
Who, do we know who the monitoring agent is, um, for the, uh? The affordable units?
I don't.
I don't know that I don't.
I'll track that down, I'm wondering if maybe we should let DHCD or the monitoring agent know. There are some concerns.
Well, because we were told that phase two was a hundred percent sold out, that's why we agreed to flip three and four. Give them four foundations at the beginning of phase, the new phase three, which we can do phase four. And come to find out, we have four units sitting there that are just framed.
And they actually said they needed inventory, was there?
Right.
But we're all sold out, we need inventory, well, in phase two, I think there's four.
We're trying to work with a big good shape.
Four, sixty-five, fifty-three, and I thought sixteen, something like that, we're not, but now. Seventy-four is not occupied, fifty-five, fifty-three.
And sixty-three.
Or sixty-three, fifty-five.
Amazing, different numbers.
You know, it was a little.
Still trapped.
Resistance, when he actually told us, we, we, uh, can't tell him how to run his business, which is true, however. A young lady sitting here who's entered into an agreement in good faith and. And she said she was supposed to close in June, it's a, the purchase seems to approximately. And. I know things could look, but nothing happens for months and then. It's framed in nineteen. Or concerned.
Yeah. Well, I mean, and we're kind of between a rock and a hard place in terms of, we don't want them to, to stop.
Oh, absolutely not.
No.
We both.
Have success in the project, the applicant as well as the board.
So it's a balance with paying attention to detail, but also getting some of these units, especially the affordable units. I mean, they don't make any money on the affordable units, so they're not. There, there's no incentive there unless they're selling market rate units, they have to sell the affordable units to keep up.
Right.
Even, even at the affordable rate, that's. They might be breaking even, I might have had to lose that, you would lose money at almost six hundred thousand dollars a foundation on the place.
For building.
Because you're up to about nine hundred thousand on a market rate for a foundations, which is two things. So, and, and there's a lot of expense, I got, uh, the asphalt's gone crazy and. I deal with the same pain every day at ten miles as well as Dan does.
That's what I'm thinking is considering, their cost of employees. Rising dramatically and probably will continue for some time, we just.
Everybody bought in good faith. I was supposed to go up to eight, uh, eight to nine dollars a, uh, gallon by first year. What they got through asphalt.
So, yes, we're just trying to, and it was. Resisted to, uh, uh. Questions. And. I think there was also something in the MOU that they had to provide financial breakdown after it was fifty percent complete.
I believe so.
Of which we haven't gotten anything. And they're at, well, kind of was started, they're beyond fifty percent.
Uh, I don't know that exact number, cause. To my era, I took the, the house numbers as they were assigned going through the development, but my predecessor did not. Necessarily have one, three, five, seven, nine. The appropriately missed out numbers to keep numbers across from each other, so if this was twelve. This became eleven, even as this should have been number five, so. The numbers in there, I have to actually go back through, I don't have the diagram and physically calculate the units that are actually there.
We certainly don't wanna stop, there's definitely some concerns. This is all gonna pan out as we move forward. Now, I think there's one, one of those, uh, on the new street, was four of them framed almost one right after another.
On Nautical Way, the one, so right now he has.
Four foundations.
One, two, three, four foundations framed, he's got two sided window door. Uh, two foundations and he's got one of those two is, uh, he's in doing material trim.
And the fifth foundation then and the sixth hole is dug.
Right.
But the ones that, they were all framed in what, late winter?
Uh, early spring. Yeah, I'm gonna say. Started, started digging holes before November of last year.
Yep.
Once he get to binder coat, then he immediately started digging holes. They had holes sitting there and then he had foundations sitting there, it's, it's not been a fast progress on any of it. Now he's, he's trimming, like I said, but a big concern to me is in fact, there's still no electricity in the road there. And I've asked a couple of times on a date, do you have any time schedule on that? In my mind, thinking, I'm asking this because we have the other units have. The affordables and stuff like that that are sitting idle, but yet we're all the way to trim on this and there's not even any electricity.
And it did say that the one that they're pushing forward on was a full, full price unit.
Yep.
And it, he said it had been sold for quite some time, the person picked out that location, but. We don't have any power, that's between them and National Grid, I guess, but I don't know how they.
Comes in with financials. That's what we need.
But he can't get occupancy until he gets the electricity. Ken got that.
How many permits do they have, they have not?
Just permits, have they not started at all?
Yeah.
All permits that have been issued on Nautical Way have some, some start point, whether it's an extension all the way to a, a trip.
Oh, so the one that has excavation has.
Yep, that's the last one.
And then there's a foundational, it has a permit, then the other four buildings.
And how many more market rates before he has to sell an affordable?
Well, that's, that's. It does still been questioned.
That is definitely a question, questionable because.
He showed us, the last time we called him in, he did show us the numbers. Is right on the number.
Again, only has four that are still vacant.
Right, so. Four, affordable or four?
No, four regular.
Four regular, but as soon as he sells a couple more markets, he's gonna have to, I mean, he's due for an affordable.
It's based off of. Or out of will be sixteen, not twenty-five percent, so it, it's confusing as to how.
Yeah, well, we gave him a cushion so he can jump ahead a little bit with the markets, but he's not even doing that, he's not even selling those.
No. This is what they submitted, actually showing that they have several affordables on the contract, but they don't have any.
They haven't sold.
Well, they. They say there's some, you know, closing dates.
Well, I know their contract, they're not sold.
Yeah, correct. They have an issued occupancy. This was submitted about two and a half months ago, they had in. This is the first painter.
Right. So he had a cushion of six market rates allowed at that point.
But under agreement, doesn't count as sold.
Right.
Yeah, we made that clear at the beginning, sold is.
Yeah, cause he had twelve affordable units sold. So he could go six more markets. Before he had to do another. Forty, hit forty-eight. Wait, that wasn't right. What he would have to do.
It is confusing, so.
Yeah, this map was wrong. But then he came back and showed us. Cause if he has twelve market rate or if he has twelve affordable units. He's eventually going to have to, he can only do thirty-six market rates, cause that's one out of every four.
Yeah, but it was the way it's word is, four out of every sixteen.
Sixteen, right. So he can catch up, so he had twelve, so he'd done the twelve and thirty-six and then he could wait till he gets to the forty-eight. Before jumping ahead.
Right.
And do, but then he would have another, he'd have to do another four.
Right.
Affordables all at once.
Yeah.
Before that forty-eighth unit is sold.
Right.
But he's not selling anything right now.
Well, there's minimal amount of work being done up there.
It's, it's, it's a very slow progress up there at the site. Uh, he says that he does have units sold, uh, but it's a very slow progress up there.
Well, he has them under agreement, under into a sale.
Yeah.
I don't know, I guess we're looking for some help on how we should, you know, go forward, go forward.
Was there the, um, woman who had the unit under agreement, do we have the backup? Did she submit a purchase and sale agreement to the board? Did we have evidence of that?
No. Uh, we did, we did get that because it, yeah, it had dates in it.
Yeah. And closing date was.
June thirty.
Approximately June thirty.
If I had that record, I, I might poke the bear a little bit up at the, at DHCD, see if they wanna. Provide some pressure.
Cause it doesn't say, it says closing date, June, on a before, June thirty, the typical, because the sales.
Yeah.
On a before, it doesn't say approximate, but he, Ed's saying, Ed's saying that's an approximate date.
Well, a, a full quarter later is not approximate.
So you wanna see him completed? Be successful there, seems.
But maybe, I mean, if he's going in for occupancy permits and he somehow slipped up on. Some of the other required infrastructure that's required on the permit, there is some letter saying, well, you're not getting occupancy. Cause you didn't do this, so.
Well, anything on Nautical Way, phase three. It's, he won't, he won't be getting any occupancies on, cause there's no electricity.
Right, so that is availability then, but there's some other things that were mentioned here tonight too.
Phase two has four units.
Right, so there's still four units. Sitting around.
In phase one, the very first unit is their model setup, so that. Right, so that has an occupancy to use it as a model? I don't know. So yeah, but look, see if that actually, yeah, we got an.
I remember that question coming up a really long time ago. And I think we was like, it was condition, additional occupancy or something like that. But for a specific purpose, I think we've worked on it, that could have been, that could have been pre-larried.
I, I could.
Might have been a Dell.
Ken had asked me a question a couple of months ago and I didn't know the answer to it, I, I didn't, you would have an issue, but. He said, is it allowed to finish the basement and be up in that development being a forty feet?
Sure. Subject to code issues, you can't add.
No reason why not, I didn't see anything alive.
But yeah, finish your basements, doesn't, doesn't matter.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if there was anything in, in their agreement or anything with regards to.
No, I mean, you, you obviously can't put bedrooms, but you wouldn't allow that anyway, so, the basement, yeah, no, nothing. Okay, we have had, I mean, there are.
There were a lot of basements if you have all of the degress requirements, so.
Right, do they have?
Yeah, it's like, uh, they do have.
But I, I think they can't do that though, I think there are, I think the permit does mention specific bedroom counts. I believe.
Actually.
Well, I know they're listed as two and three bedroom units.
Right.
It actually mentioned square footage, because we increased the square footage. Because we made, then we allowed them to make them five feet longer than.
But that was footprint, square footage.
Alright.
Yeah, the units run from sixteen fifty-four to seventeen twenty-five of square footage.
And.
In there, two and three bedroom units and one and two parrot units.
They got some work to do.
There's another thing I questioned was, I forgot to the exterior finish. All the units going up phase one, phase two have the split block halfway up, have vertical siding. Have, uh, black windows, black gutters, and now the unit set is doing a nautical way, have no split block, have no vertical siding. Have white windows.
But we, we didn't mine down, I mean, but I think we approved architectural type. In the permit, cause he presented us with plans.
Long as there's no distinction, I don't think between affordable and.
Right.
Market rate.
That on the exterior.
The phase if they're consistently the same.
Right, in terms of exterior finishes, I'm not sure we got down that deep.
Yeah.
It's just a question I had, cause I don't end up getting through phase three and somebody come down and say.
As long as everybody doesn't have, uh, vertical siding and black windows, then we get to the affordable and they're playing game white with D one eleven.
Right, yeah, you can't, you can't do that, they, they have to be indistinguishable on the exterior.
Good, we have some, uh.
I'm gonna take a spin through the MOU and the permit, just see if there's anything out there that. Who maybe can use to get a bit of finish, at least some affordable units, that's leverage going forward on stuff. Who maybe can use to get them to finish it, at least some affordable units, that's leverage going forward on stuff. So again, we wanted to keep building, so we don't wanna throw up too many barriers, but. Want to apply some pressure to get these affordable units sold.
I mean, everything's interest rate sensitive, particularly the affordables. Probably have more sensitivity to.
Sure.
Rates and. I don't, it seems to me it could become a problem for them down the road if they don't pause on these rates continue to walk, a lot of people are gonna get. Become. Not able to move forward.
You know, are they, is the, are they building elsewhere or is this their own contact?
Yeah, they have a. Six lots of development in Oxford, they have a. What he said it was.
Which one in Oxford?
Not a water.
No, no, I know, but.
It is building single family, colonial.
But those were.
Do you know the name of it?
I don't know the name of development, I know it's on McGuire Road. But if you come in off a lackey damn road, go up to the first stop sign, go straight through, it's right there on the right hand side.
They're they're moving at a snail's pace as well. Lost two.
And and they also go in itself grafted, that he said they're finishing up.
That's where he came from, that's where he does some projects. Okay, well, I'll review this stuff again and. You know, stay in contact with you and Ken and see if we can. Or we can maybe provide a little pressure.
And did you make a note, see if Jen has those P and S as well, Jay?
I didn't know.
Leave her a note. Should have been a record, I think we had a couple of.
We got one more article. Cemetery. Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's what they're here for, they're sleeping over there.
Oh.
I should have recognized you.
So um, should we, at one time they're coming in locally, should we get on some type of schedules or?
Well, let's find a reason to get him in here, I don't wanna get in a fight with them, they say we don't have to visit you. Uh, if there's something that legitimately.
And that's the standard taking right at the moment.
Right, they're not gonna come in unless there's some potential enforcement out there, so I'll take a spin through the permit, the M O U. I'll find the last version of all the amendments and. See if we have a reason to get him in here.
Actually, close to a year ago. Tim wanted those permits, he actually wanted the permits before the road was paved, because he had no inventory.
We had the fire department and him, and they agreed to give him the first five because of the distance from the fire.
But that was foundation only. Right, until the road was paved, last foundations only.
Seven, the roads completed all the way through the binder. With the exception of electric, like you said.
It's a big, it's a big except. Yeah.
Alright, well, alright, whatever you can.
Yeah, let's see if we can bump along a little bit.
Does anything you need, just shoot me an email.
You hear anything back after you wrote that letter on this project?
Uh, they're shut down. The battery storage system is shut down on the project, and I told them until I get full documentation on this whole thing. We'll keep it that way, they agreed to it. Did a site visit with all of the safety personnel from town. Once already, they're doing a fire department training, they're one of the first ones uh, tomorrow. You supposed to be getting me on the O N M. But the whole.
Battery storage facilities are of concern everywhere, they they run hot and there's a.
Let's give I had concerns. Not only of the batteries, should they ignite, they'd be a problem. What contamination problems that might arise from them.
Yes.
And I had the manufacturer of the enclosure there, the batteries, and he said, well, you know, this is fully self-contained. And I says, is it really? And he goes, well, I says, you gotta a connection point here for a fire department to flood this. Sea container, for lack of another word. I said, so you flood that with water, it's a fully self-contained, but yeah, I said, well, how come you got all these conduits? A B C conduit pipe that goes from this container to your D C inverters here. Control panels, that's all underground, that's all coming out of the sky.
Well, that they have a different definition of. Yeah, tough, cuz I've, I've got that issue in like five towns, like what do we do with these battery storage facilities?
Well, the 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 biggest problem I find with these parks is. They get the panels in, they get the rough grade stone, and they want their C O Cs. And they utilize the argument they need the C O C to get in line for the utilities to start talking to them. About running the connection points. We have another one that's potentially coming into town. There will be no C O Cs until that park is done. I will have a meeting.
Another, another good reason, maybe we should could get around to doing a bylaw.
Oh, absolutely.
Doesn't have to be long, cuz I, you can't fight the Dover amendment, but at least create some permit process. Where we can put a slated conditions. Just make them subject to a special.
I mean, my biggest problem with the whole thing was the permitting was issued as a. Photovoltaic slash battery storage.
Yeah, no, we have some standalone where they say there is no solar panels, it's just battery.
That'll be, that'll be the permit. So I was gonna ask. Say hi to Larry.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Jack. Uh, we did, we're receipt of a letter from the cemetery commission. And did you wanna discuss it with us?
Sorry to keep you waiting.
Yeah, that's a little bit longer than we.
I'll apologize for the first meeting was because me and look the second one, we had serious stuff going on in town, if you know what I mean.
So I wrote a letter, um, and I should have done this ten years ago. Because I don't know how many people have lived here for in twenty, thirty years, Charlie.
Charlie.
There is a cemetery down in the gravel pit, the Baker Family Cemetery. And if anybody remembers that when they were taking gravel out of there, they dug underneath the cemetery so that you can see the caskets hanging out. And the town ordered, yes. Down in the gravel pit. Yep, and the town ordered them to backfill it.
Just know, cuz we have a minute taken, you could just identify yourself so that she has your name.
I am Betsy Youngsma.
Okay.
Douglas.
Thank you.
Sarah Guyman.
Thank you.
There were a couple other, and there was one on Pine and Vine where a house was, lot was sold. And the whole Quake at Cemetery was on the front, and nobody in the town acknowledged it until we went down with the state archivist. And um, she identified the cemetery as being there. Um, one of my biggest concern is the buildings that are going up. That as as it is now, you can build right beside a cemetery wall, but where's the definition?
Of the wall?
Yeah, if there's a plot, there's a plot down on Orange Street from Noah, Noah Aldrich Cemetery. And I don't know because they come off that map, the assesses map, and then they go back on. They told me it's because the airplane doesn't always see them, so if it's not they, they don't see it, it's not on the assesses map. But some years it is, and some years it isn't. Which is a little concerning to me. But do you see some of my points?
Yeah, but as a cemetery. Are they located on the, the. Same property as. The buildings that you talked about, a house to be built, are they on the same lot?
They can't be.
Some of them are. Um, the Baker one, I don't know, I mean, that becomes a housing development, they can build right up to the edge of where they see the first stone. There's no definition. What concerns me is how do you make a definition? Do you see what I mean? Where are the borders? This, this two Aldrich Cemetery is down on Orange Street.
Do we have a map of where all these are located in town?
Uh, you should have, I did one in two thousand and nine.
I could say that we were just issuing. Addresses to cemeteries in town.
There's sixteen of them. Believe, I know, you probably think there's only four.
I was gonna say, I could probably count them on one hand, I thought to myself.
No.
No, sixteen.
Sixteen of them.
Wow, cuz we have a question about the one on Cook Street, what the address would be on on the Cook Street. Uh, the address would be on the one that you were speaking of, South Street. Uh, we didn't get a question about the Orange Street one. I believe that South Street property just got sold also.
Do you know who it was sold to?
From Mr. Picarello, he owns property on Orange Street also.
Okay.
Before, I believe ninety acres down there. The old B and T sand and gravel.
Yeah. Yeah, cuz the cemetery is still way up on that hill, and there's a whole deep slope where they had dug out, but it goes right to the edge.
So you, you can buy a piece of property with a cemetery on?
Yes, you can. Yeah, they don't always tell them that this cemetery is. The quake has never used stones, so you wouldn't know it's there.
That being said, that's true, to sure, yeah.
Yeah, I had to go back to the seventeen hundreds to show you where it once was.
Should have just asked Charlie, he knew he was there.
Don't know.
Yeah, my name is John, by the way, I'm the, I'm the youngest.
Oh, Charlie was the older one.
Yes. Yes.
So, my question is, what are you asking us for?
What I'm asking you for is a buffer zone. And I realized that when I wrote that letter, that I should have asked for a no disturbance as opposed to a no bill. Am I correct?
I'm looking right in, I'm looking at the.
Yeah, that would have to go to a town meeting.
He has a drawing, drawing check.
Yep.
So the actually planning board is the one that. Drafts zoning changes.
Okay.
To the town meeting, so not that we're trying, trying. There's nothing we can actually do.
When I asked, they told me to go to write a letter to you, so I did.
Planning board did?
Nope, um, the office.
Oh, okay, alright.
At the end.
Yeah, but planning board is the one that makes recommendations for zoning changes, not this board.
Okay.
And then they have to be voted on at a town meeting.
Ken, could you help him with that? Figure out with that, uh. Honestly, I haven't looked in the zoning book for the cemetery section on it. If it's a zoning change, then yes, we'd write up a zoning change, that would go to the planning board for their review when they. Agreements or disagreements, and then it would go, if that was agreed upon, then it would go from the town for.
Okay.
If the whole budding cemetery was, it's a separate lot, they'd have to be forty-five feet away anyhow.
Yeah. Poppy line.
Right from the sideline.
If it was a separate lot, yeah.
If it was a separate lot.
But what. What I'm getting is that these people buying the land, the cemetery is there as part of.
Oh, okay, so you're talking two ways.
I build a house here, I didn't see anybody, but if I put a shed here or a garage or a swimming pool in.
Right.
And I start digging up human remains.
Quickly bury the hole till you don't touch it.
You know?
His head just blocked up.
Yeah, if you stop down the office when you get a chance and move over it and I'll see what I can figure out on it. If you can find that map you made, that would be.
Stephen Zisk has it.
Oh, oh, we just saw him tonight.
Yep. So if you ask him, Evan Chesborough and I identified them all.
Okay.
As to where they are, um, what disturbed me is the fact that they're not always on the assesses maps.
Like you said, though, when they take the pictures from above, it could be that they're doing it during the summertime.
Correct.
And this, this, you know.
So I try to go back every two years and see if they're still there.
Well, they didn't move them, I'm sure they're still there, so, yeah, perhaps.
Well, and as people are now dying, uh, that had owned them at one point, those cemeteries, there's two cemeteries that are gonna come back. To town old, um, this one up by Flansburg's, the Thomas one, and the Stockwell King on the back road to. Uh, Oxford.
It's one by Flanberg House, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, on which side?
On the left-hand side, a little tiny, it's no bigger than this, this area here, but it's got five stones of one family that live there. Um, and the town owns that now. Um, the Stockwell King, a lady used to pay the taxes on it, and then she died and the family didn't wanna pay him. So I think the town is taking that one as well. So that's the little Stockwell King, well, once the cemetery is filled, it doesn't make any money, does it?
No, it doesn't.
Are they getting right aways to these also, while they take any cemeteries so that the town can actually access them?
The town should be able to ask it, you can access any cemetery, whether it's on private land or not. If it's your family members or as a research project. Every homeowner that lives on that land with a cemetery has to provide you with some access to that if you want to go visit it.
Right, but I'm talking if the town's taking over, potential town maintenance. Is the difference between just accessing for research and maintaining. It might be something that town council might wanna look into if you're taking these cemeteries, if they're right away to or an access to them.
These both have street accesses. But you're right, the Baker one has none. Um, and when I called them to gain access to them, doing my due diligence. They said, no, I could not, and I said, that's not true, I can't. You should provide access to this, so that people, I mean, that's a fairly large one. I bet there's at least eighty caskets in there.
Really?
Yeah. That was a whole mill down, there was a mill down there, and the Baker family lived all around there and owned that mill. That was on the left-hand side where it floods, and there's a whole large cemetery of their family members down there.
Which, which one is that, what road is that on?
On South Street. But there's no, there's no road access, you have to wander in through.
Right.
Where it flooded, where the mill was, to go up to the right-hand side to the cemetery.
You may wanna check with the assessor, we have a new town assessor there that might be able to permanently put that on the maps, so it gets.
That one should be on, I think that was on there the last.
Yeah, but you're saying that there's one that appear and disappear. Um, you wanna talk to him and see if you can get it so they.
Don't.
Is permanently acknowledged on it.
That one's also registered with the state, state has, cuz I checked to make sure that the state also, the mass, um, historic.
Okay, if you come down to the building, we'll see what we can do to get you on track and get things moving in the direction that you're looking for.
Okay.
Alright.
I'm looking for preservation.
Okay.
Cuz I don't think these things should be disturbed, dug up or bothered, I also think the state laws involved in that.
Who want maintenance them?
The private ones, most of them, the people that own them take care of them.
Yeah.
I mean, I, like I said, a couple of years ago around, I said, look at them, make sure they're still there, this one, um. Up on private land on Manchog Pond, sometimes it's underwater, sometimes it's not. But I make sure that they're still there, that's privately owned, they'll let anybody that needs to go down, see it, see it. Um, it's fully documented as to who's in it, so is the Baker Cemetery.
Yeah. I remember the Baker family.
Yep, so.
I didn't think there were that many, you gotta look at it like Crystal Lake, in the middle of this call course, it's cemetery.
Yeah.
Yep.
Right in the middle.
Can't move them, there's one, if you go to the Georgia airport, there's one in there too.
Really?
Yes, there is. Can't move them.
Well, I hope we're a help, but just too bad you had to come to us cuz that was. Did you, did you notice that their commission put a new flagpole up?
I, who?
Yes. In the new section.
Apparently, you didn't notice.
I drive by it all the time.
And you never looked.
No, I'm going home tonight, I'll try to look.
Yeah, between the pines, in the new section.
Right, yeah, yeah, new sections on the right-hand side, right? And it is illuminated, there's a light on the very top, so they don't have to take the flag down.
Oh, did they?
Yep.
Oh, good.
Veterans donated it and put it up and made sure it was lighted and gave us the flag. Veterans donated it and put it up and made sure it was lighted and gave us the flag.
Sweet, great.
That was one of the goals of your new member.
It was.
Yes, it was.
Leo.
Leo Lyons, yeah, you're right.
Well, good to see yous.
Yes, thank you for coming.
How's your kids?
Good, very good.
Can all, like you?
Oh, yes.
Thank you for the new name, cause I was tired of it.
It's kind of stick, trust me.
Go on.
I'll, you know, I'll, I'll give you my brother's memory, you live in Florida, so that's good. Yeah, I do, long time ago.
Thank you for coming in.
You're welcome.
Yes.
So there's a good history lesson.
Yeah.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. I would have buried myself in my eyes, it would be seventeen.
Buried on your land, you know.
Yeah.
As long as you put it on your deed, the law doesn't say you can't, but if you're buried on your land, you have to put it in your deeds, or whoever it sold to. Knows that there is a burial plot on it and you're in it, whoa. Whoa, nobody builds on top of you.
I already got a stone. See, you're so, Mike, you had a, or your family had a cemetery? And I bought all in, including it, what would it cost you to get in there? If you were the last one. Yeah, they already got your stone picked out, Chuck.
Everybody's okay with it.
You wanna do anything with the uh, um, the changes on that form? Just, is that anything?
Oh, actually.
Before certified plot.
Certified plot, yeah, I would, I'm okay with that.
That was, yeah, yeah. I agree.
I agree.
I just happen to know, so that's.
Yeah, no.
You wanna say, change it to that or change it from that? Alright.
True.
Yeah, cause before. Right, the original said, a certified plot plan, but then we added, I believe it was you that asked. That it be a certified plot plan before and after.
Before, yeah. Yeah, so that's what I put in.
Showing existing and proposed. Existing and proposed, right, yeah. Make a motion to uh, accept the changes presented uh, by Ken Frazier for our application showing the uh. But existing and proposed uh, plot plan added to our application.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Palmer. Call the favor.
Aye.
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 Aye, Dan, aye.
Aye, John O'Mara. Palmer, aye.
Ron Ford, aye.
Charlie's friend, Mike, aye.
We did have the minutes on there, but I, I forgot mine.
Yeah, I didn't read it, I didn't re-throw it, and I'm kinda tired.
Okay, so we'll, we'll do that next meeting, yeah.
Motion to adjourn? Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Bombara to adjourn, second by Mr. Fitzpatrick, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Meetings adjourned at uh, eight fifty-eight.